All right. So I'm going to call the, to order the March 22, 2023, meeting of the Sandusky Planning Commission. I would ask Ms. Rambo to call the roll, please.
Jade Castile, here. Jim Jackson. Pete Magory.
Here.
David Miller.
Here.
Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whelan. Mike Zuloff.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Does anybody feel we need to excuse Mr. Jackson or just leave it at the way it is?
It's not required.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February 22, 2023 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'm just going to say all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approval of minutes passed. Next item is new business, Southside Draft Plan Presentation. I think that is through staff and, I guess, the people that are involved in the process. So go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Magory. So we are going to give you a high-level draft plan presentation about the Southside Plan. The plan is out in a public review draft form right now. We're taking feedback on that for the next week, but it's largely finalized. We've done a lot of community engagement. Our consultant team's going to go over that with you to really accurately report what we heard and come up with actionable items to implement the Southside Plan. We also took all of the action items that the consultant team brought to us and workshopped them internally with multiple departments to make sure we're not documenting anything that city staff's not willing to sign up for and implement. So we believe that this is a strategic, actionable, it's ambitious, but it is an actionable plan, and we are already moving forward with some things that we knew we wanted to implement already, which I'll touch on at the end of the presentation. But I will pass it off, and let me make sure we can get our visuals going well here so you all and folks at home can see the draft plan presentation. We have Michael Johnson and Kendra Heisen with Smith Group with us today, and they will do some of the presentation here. And let's see, you have us on a side by side. Let me see what this looks like if I share the slides.
Consultant was the word I was drawing.
Yes. And does that bring them up?
I believe you have to share it through teams.
Okay, so then if I hit Share Through Teams, thanks. Everyone, for your patience with our technology, but it's pretty amazing what we can do with this and that we all learned how over the pandemic, but then we have to remember how, use it constantly. And I'm going to float your camera. Kendra, what do you think? Bottom right, bottom left, top right? When are we going to get in the least way of our slides?
Uh, maybe bottom right.
All right, we'll try that. I might, I'll stand at the podium and move you around if you're making key points that the audience cannot see because of the Teams window. Thanks so much. I'll pass it off to you.
Not a problem. Thank you all so much for having us here today. My name is Kendra Heisen. I'm a trained landscape architect and urban planner with Smith Group, the consultants for the Southside Neighborhood Plan, and I'm joined by Michael Johnson, Principal and Vice President of Urban Design for our Smith Group office in, based out of Ann Arbor. I'm excited to present the plan. I was just in Sandusky, was that a week or so ago?
Yeah, last week.
I don't know. Oh, was it last week? Okay, time flies. I was just in Southside last week presenting the plan, giving a thorough brief to the community on everything we've done so far and what we've placed in the plan and to make sure that it truly reflects the community and their wishes. We can go to the next slide. So it might be a bit of a delay on my end, but I can't see the slides advanced, but I can just keep going. Okay.
We're having some technical difficulties.
So we begun this process with a great deal of research, some site visits, and we wanted to learn about the Southside, get some demographic information, and create some, create a framework for existing conditions so that we could share with the community what we see is going on with the Southside at the moment. Here, you'll see some of the data points as well as plan drivers that we came up with based on the existing condition, and you'll see a lot of these graphics again if you are looking, if you've taken a moment to look at the plan or whenever you decide to have a look at the full plan. And so with that, we discovered that Southside is a diverse neighborhood within comparison to a lot of other communities within the Ohio region and within Sandusky. We realized that the Southside is multi-generational, meaning that it had multiple family members of different ages living together, as well as lots of resident, longstanding residents who have lived in the Southside for multiple generations. Also, we realized that Southside is open for business. People are looking to work. They want to establish businesses in the Southside, and along Perkins Ave is a main commercial corridor for businesses as well. And then Southside is really community-oriented. We heard constantly "Southside for Life." We've met tons of people who were deeply involved in the community and had been for years and generations, and we wanted to use those relationships with those longstanding residents to help facilitate an engagement process that would lead to an inclusive plan. We can hop to the next slide. This planning effort came, was sort of initiated through some other planning initiatives. So we had the bicentennial plan, the public art plan, as well as the neighborhoods plan that outlined a lot of the things that we wanted to see, that outlined why we wanted to do the Southside Plan in the first place and outlined some of the things that were important going into the project. So initially going into the project, it was already identified from these previous planning efforts that housing and neighborhoods were really important, parks and open space was very important, economic prosperity and branding and beautification were some of the things that came out of those previous planning initiatives. Hop on over to the next slide. After doing some existing conditions, understanding what previous planning efforts had done, we embarked on some community engagement, and you'll see here from all these little colorful boxes that there were several opportunities to get involved in the plan. We tried as hard as we could to make sure we reached every resident within the Southside through multiple avenues, whether that was social media. We had folks canvassing the neighborhoods, pass out flyers. We went to community events like Ogo, the Ogo Food Pantry that happened during the spring when we were there before, to hand out flyers and to talk to folks about the plan. We had a steering committee of local residents and advocates who helped guide the engagement process and helped us guide, you know, the goals and the vision for the plan as well. We also did a community dinner, which was really well-received at the beginning, and then a youth engagement where we met with Sandusky youth to get their perspective on what they wanted to see in the Southside. And on this slide, you can see a lot, some of the outcomes that are to the left, on the left of the slide, what things that we wanted to protect, things we wanted to enhance, and things we wanted to transform, and these things came out of all of the engagement we done, we had done, including some online surveys as well. So out of that, we can move on to the next slide. We cultivated a vision for the plan that we vetted with the community and we vetted with the steering committee and developed this vision that we think is all-encompassing of the things that were important to Southside residents. And so the vision for the Southside is that Southside is a welcoming, safe, family-focused neighborhood with a deep sense of community pride, where new and longstanding residents from a diversity of economic, social, and ethnic backgrounds have access to key resources like small and local businesses, well-paying jobs, affordable housing, open spaces, and social services that enhance all community members' living experience. So this vision is what we are aspiring to within this plan, and the following goals and strategies that we outline in the plan all support this overarching vision for the Southside. Moving to the next slide. Within the plan itself, we wanted to make sure, throughout this process, it was very clear that we needed to make sure all information was accessible to people, that people understood how the plan worked. We didn't want this to be a document that just sat on the shelf and nobody took a look at, so we tried to make it as readable and graphic-heavy as possible to, so that people would want to read the plan and they could easily understand what we were trying to achieve through the plan. And so this, this page or this slide here outlines how we broke the plan down. Within the plan, we came up, we had six pillars that were essentially six main focus areas for the plan. Each document has a cover, each pillar has a cover that has a vision statement for that particular pillar. Within that chapter, you will see, like I said, the vision statement, you'll see some key terms, you'll also see some narrative around why goals and this, why the goals and the vision were chosen as they were, and you'll see strategies as well as supporting information like case studies, research, data, all of the things that support the goals that we crafted for the plan with the community. As I mentioned earlier, there are six pillars that we focused on in this plan, number one being housing and neighborhoods, and that focused on affordable housing, aging in place, home improvement funds for folks with fixed income, and a specific focus on the MacArthur Park community. The second pillar is connectivity and infrastructure, and we wanted, it became clear that sidewalks, sidewalk improvements and replacements, road conditions, pedestrian and bike connectivity, and utility wastewater, lighting, and stormwater were very important topics for connectivity and infrastructure. Churchwell Park, I mean, parks and open space with a spoke, with a focus on Churchwell Park enhancements and connecting people to the parks and open spaces and recreation spaces that exist within Sandusky, and then supporting the expanding of existing park programs, as well as access and services, where we wanted to build trust with the community, look at mental, mental and so, health and social services to support the community, as well as how can we provide the community with healthy and affordable foods. And then economic prosperity, where we have job creation, job training, local businesses, those are things that are key focuses of those sections. And then branding and beautification, so making sure that Southside had an identity, there was key wayfinding and gateway signage that identify where you are, that you've arrived in Sandusky, that you've arrived in the Southside, and this is the place you want to be, and then some streetscape improvements. As we move to the next slide, you'll see just a few of the high-priority goals for each chapter. I'll just read the top goal, you can, you all can kind of see what's happening on the slide and all the goals, but each of these chapter pillars has an associated chapter, as I mentioned before, and there are more goals within each of those chapters, but I encourage you to go read the plan because it's awesome. So for neighborhood, housing and neighborhoods, our top priority goal was expanding housing assistance for current residents and maintaining overall housing affordability. For connectivity and infrastructure, we wanted to upgrade neighborhood infrastructure, including wastewater and stormwater systems. Parks and open space, we want to transform Churchwell Park into a neighborhood-serving park. We want to provide more programming, more design in that park space for the community. Priority for access and services was to build trust and to improve the relationship between the city and the Southside communities. Economic prosperity would be incentivize development opportunities and allow for strategically located mixed-use. And then for branding and beautification, these two should be switched, I think, a little bit, but we want to improve streetscape to reinforce a sense of place and enhance real and perceived safety, but we really want to tell the Southside story, and that became very evident throughout the process. If we advance to the next slide, the next slide essentially just shows a rendering that you'll see within the plan that highlights the different focus areas within the plan and highlights where certain, where work will be done, where connectivity opportunities exist, as well as like just graphically getting folks excited about the future vision of the plan. So this articulates the top priorities for the plan. If we move to the next slide, this is just a sample page of, that you'll see within the plan, as I mentioned before, you'll see that each section or pillar has a vision for housing and neighborhoods. The vision was, in the Southside, residents will have access to multiple housing types at different price points, a variety of housing options will encourage homeownership, accommodate a variety of living situations, and provide residents the opportunity to age in place. And so this is just one, one of the pillars that we didn't go, we're not going to go through all of them because we don't have a lot, a lot of time, but you'll see something like this in every single chapter of the plan, based on those six pillars that I mentioned earlier. And then the next slide, the next slide showcases how, it's an implementation slide that, or a spread that's at the end of every chapter that breaks down how many goals are in the, in each chapter, how many strategies we develop to achieve those goals, and the partners that we hope to work with to achieve those goals. Additionally, within each chapter are a list of action items, and actions are basically things that the city and the community can do, whether that be near-term, midterm, or long-term, to achieve the goals of the plan. And like I said, we broke down the actions in, in the implementation guide that I'll get to a bit later, into a timeframe of when these goal, when these actions can be achieved in order to reach our goals. So the next slide highlights the implementation strategy or portion of the document. This is actually the very spread you'll see in the document. This outlines the, the different agencies or organizations that we talked to and met with that could potentially help us implement this plan. And like I said, every action and strategy is broken down into near-term, midterm, and long-term. Near-term being one to three years, midterm being four to seven, and long-term being seven to 10. And then there's a list of acronyms for the different agencies we'd like to work with or partner with for those strategies or actions. And the following slide, basically, in addition to an implementation and action guide, there's also a plan alignment guide in the plan that outlines how each of the goals from each of the pillars in the chapters align with existing planning initiatives that you all have already done and already accomplished. So we don't want to reinvent the wheel, we want to build on the work that you're already doing and make sure that these goals are supporting other planning initiatives across the city as well. And so this next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Erin because we've already gotten started on some of these action items that are in the plan, so this is really exciting that we're beginning to implement, and I'll kick it over to Erin.
Thanks, Kendra. So it's, there's a lot of things, like I mentioned, we knew were already important when we came into this planning process, which Kendra aligned into the different planning things that have already been happening, that have already been documented, conversations we have with community, the neighborhood ice cream socials last year when we were out in the community and other community meetings. So we know that big ideas take a long time to implement, so we got to get started. So one example is there's an RFQ out right now for the design of Churchwell Park, to think about the future of that park space and also the underlying infrastructure. So MacArthur Park, and when you read the plan, you'll see it's really well-documented that there's specific infrastructure challenges in the MacArthur Park neighborhood. So we are going to hire an engineering and landscape architecture, like a park design and engineering team, to look at that space, to make sure we don't make any park improvements that we'll have to dig up later, to think about infrastructure in line with community recreation. And those proposals are due March 29, and then we'll go into interviewing and hopefully hiring a team to help take us through that project, and that is something that the community's going to see us deliver on right away. We'll have more community engagement with them, and you'll see that there's a really beautiful, high-level vision and kind of a number of components for Churchwell Park, which gives us a great starting point that, in the engagement process we've already had through the Southside Plan. Another, oh, I would like to mention too, Erie County Health Department is supporting that process. They have awarded us $275,000 through their Ohio Health Improvement Zone Grant, and that was accepted by City Commission in a memorandum of understanding. So that's a great example of working with partners to bring resources to the community and, and some of those relationships that we've been building through this planning process and other processes. It's because we, the city alone cannot implement this whole plan. There's a lot that will be driven by charities and other part, you know, agencies and partners and, and the community members themselves. Another example is the Safe Routes to Schools Plan, so that's another where the Erie County Health Department is leading this portion. We are at the table with them and Sandusky City Schools, and they are documenting in a Safe Routes to School Plan, specific pedestrian and bike safety that can help kids get to school safely, which largely will connect Southside residents to the schools, and that will make us eligible for funding from the Department of Transportation, for example, for Safe Routes to School, which can sometimes build sidewalks and do other kind of safety improvements. The, in 2023, the Housing Development Beautification Grant, that's all happening right now, applications, excuse me, are being accepted, and one thing we heard through the community engagement was, we don't know how, how to sign up for this, we don't understand, how do we attract, how do we win some of that grant money? We know the city has this program every year, and members of our housing team went out and had meetings at Mills School with Southside community, specifically targeting, walking them through how to apply for that grant. So that's just an example of some community outreach that we heard a call for and that we've already started to answer. Another example is the Sandusky Recreation Center. So we are working with Brand Center Carroll right now, and that's, our rec team is leading a project to start to take a look at a recreation center and what's the essential program there and where is it going to be, and that's something that we hear a lot about from Southside, is how important it is for kids to have a place to go that's safe, and they're really excited about the recreation programming that's happening there now and how that can continue, and also a citywide recreation center. Another mention, and this is again just kind of emphasizing how partnerships really help bring things together, is a housing study. So Firelands Forward is conducting a housing study for Huron, Ottawa, and Erie Counties, and that's going to give us some really good data, understanding the inventory of housing, the pricing of housing, the vacancy rates in the multi-county region, which has direct implications for us understanding the development market, working on affordable housing projects, working on new market rate housing, so other places, you know, so we have mobility in housing, because when people don't have an option of where to move, that contributes to an affordability issues as well. So all of those things are happening right now, and they are all aligned with one or a number of implementation action items in the Southside Plan.
Thanks for that, Erin. And I think the remaining slides are just a few images from the plan that highlight a concept rendering for the Churchwell Park improvements, as well as some streetscape and entryway and branding opportunities for Churchwell Park that can occur in other places across the planning area. And with that, we still have, the plan is still in review. Please, if you are a community member, you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at the plan and give your comments. We have a survey. If you can scan the QR code from home, try to do that. If not, I'm sure there's a link on the city's website, as well as, we can share that link out with you all, the draft plan for you to read it and give your feedback. You have until March 29 to do so. And with that, I would like to thank you for your time today, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you. So I would, I'll, Kendra will stay with us for any questions you have for her, and I'll be here for any questions you have for me. What we would love to do today, if you, you know, we sent the plan last week, we would love to, if you are comfortable with the recommendation to adoption, I'd love to bring this to City Commission April 10 with a plan for support. If you have specific, I, I am confident in asking for that today because the key components are in here, and we are, we have come up with an actionable plan. If you have specific, like, change this image, change this word, re-prioritize this goal, that's the kind of feedback that we absolutely want to incorporate into the final document that we bring for adoption to City Commission. So I would defer to the Planning Commission for how, if you're comfortable with that recommendation today. But that's the timeline that we've outlined, would be to bring this to you today and then bring to City Commission April 10, so we can really get to work on this plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff, go ahead.
Couple things. The first thing I'd say is, I think on the full report, somewhere around page 1214 or something, is a two-page spread of highlighted action points. Can, do you have that, do we have that available? That page?
I do not have the full planning document on the computer right now.
Okay, all right.
I can look, I can pull it up online.
Never mind that, I would, that's the closest, so what I was going to say is that, that's the closest thing we have to an executive summary. I think this thing desperately cries for an executive summary. It's 158 pages. It's pretty dense, there's a lot there, some fantastic work. In particular, I think those highlighted recommendations are worth discussing here and, and highlighting. I, I'm a little worried that with 158 pages, it could wind up in a drawer and, you know, could impede its usefulness on a day-by-day basis, and, and could impede its, or, or, the summary might make it helpful to make decisions on what and when to adopt. The, my worry here is that we really, if, if we can say that the members here have reviewed this document, I'd say, I'd be all in favor of making a recommendation. I think, I'd like the chance to make some recommendations for some changes, in particular the executive summary. So I'm not really comfortable voting to, you know, recommend for this quite yet. I, I did attend the, the full presentation on Wednesday, and there are some, some concerns, in particular about prioritization. And, and we, you got that feedback from at least one resident who said that we got to clarify that fixing broken sidewalks and potholes probably comes ahead of bike paths. I, I wouldn't term it, use the, quite the same terms that that sits and use, but you, you know, let's face it, we, and Amat shows a whole lot of guidance on prioritization of some of these ideas, even though there's some fabulous ideas and fabulous work. I know, I know it's only, it is 158 pages, and, you know, some of it's, that can fool you, because like, for example, page 113 is, well, page 112 is just a graphic that says nothing, and page 13 has, you know, difficult concepts like defining a vacant lot. So, you know, it's not really 158 pages to absorb, but it's still probably all of 100 pages. So those are, those are my comments. I'm a little worried about sending it on. If I felt if I sent it on today, we, we're just rubber-stamping it, not really looking at it.
I have a question.
Can I? Is it okay to address the?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, to note that within the plan, to your point, there is a lot, the plan is very graphic-heavy, which was intentional as a way for it to be much more approachable than a typical planning, a technical planning document you would see, or you've probably seen in the past, that's very text-rich. We are, Erin and I have worked out that we were working on an executive summary to add in there, so I will be sure to give that to you, so that you have the full breakdown of which goals are top priorities, which, how we went about this planning process, so it's a little bit easier to digest. I would also encourage you to look at page 140 and 141, starting there with the action plan, which outlines all the actions, all the strategies, all the goals for the plan, as well as the timeline for those goals and the, and the leaders to potentially support those goals. So in terms of prioritization, I think you could look to that section to kind of identify, you could see where things are, you know, near-term or long-term or midterm, as well as within each of the chapters, we outline at the very end, as I showed you earlier, an implementation or strategy summary that outlines the top main goals for the, for each chapter and the main strategies that we wanted to work towards immediately. So I think we worked really hard to make sure that we laid that out for you, and I hope that you, when you get a chance to take a look at the full document in depth, that you get to do that. And I do remember that comment about the, you know, we have to have sidewalks and roads before we have bike lanes. I mean, we can't put a bike lane on a road that's cracked generally, so, and I don't think bike lanes necessarily, it's not about prioritizing a bike lane versus prioritizing a road. We understand that you need a road in order to move people in any capacity, whether that's vehicular, pedestrian, or bike, and that once we, once we do that, make, make those changes, we'll be in a better position to do simple things like paint bike paths, or, you know, do some tactical urbanism, which is much more community-driven and costs a lot less, but has a great impact in showing the community what things could look like over time as, as things progress. So I encourage you to take the time you need to review the document, I totally understand that, and if you have any other questions, we're here to answer those questions and provide any feedback you feel necessary.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to put you in the position of defending the draft. I was, it was more feedback. I would, I would say that the summary should not include anything that isn't already in the draft, I wouldn't add to it. So, and I, and I did review the action. So, and I did review the action plan toward the end, and it's very dense and there's a lot there. And I would say that even that, you know, probably needs to be summarized. And I would still insist that there, some priorities need to be more, some recommendations for what are highest and lesser priorities probably needed to be incorporated. Again, I'm going to take in good faith that you're looking for feedback, and don't let me put you in the position of defending the draft. I'm just providing, providing feedback, and do with it what you will.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm not, I'm just letting you know where we addressed your points in the plan already. So that was all I was, and there is a lot in the plan, because this is a community that has wanted to say things, has wanted to be heard for a long period of time, and feels like they had a lot, they needed a lot, to be honest. And so that's why it may seem like a lot, but I think there are a lot of goals that we can hit, you know, simultaneously and do a lot of these things collectively. So thank you for that feedback, and we'll take all of that, for sure.
I'd like to make a comment. I went to the presentation, and I'm looking at what's listed here for today's presentation, and it says, "Southside Draft Plan." So, I mean, I take that to mean that this is a preliminary proposal. I also would observe personally that the plan as presented and as put together includes everything in the world that you could possibly want for the South Side. And I'm going to guess that not every one of those things will happen ever. And as Mr. Zuloff pointed, I guess there's maybe some prioritization that could occur, such as fixing existing roads and sewers and streets first. But this is really like throwing everything on the table and say, we want to make that whole place better, and if we did every one of these things, each one of those things would make it better. But like for employment, for example, number one, I think that's mostly residential. You're not going to put any factories in there. Factories are the really good employment, unless you, unless you're a bank president in there, and I don't know that they're going to put a bank in there. So it's great to say, we're going to try to work on some employment, but that's really the whole city. And people living on the South Side, if they can get a good job downtown, or in Perkins, or whatever, if it's a great job, that solves the problem. So I really don't have a problem saying, hey, we're finally addressing this, let's give it a vote of approval. Personally, I feel that way. It's not going to be exactly this way in the end.
Thanks for those comments. This is, I think, the first time there's been a really targeted neighborhood plan in the city of Sandusky. And if and when we pursue targeted neighborhood plans across the city, I think you'll find that a lot of these recommendations and actions would be true for every neighborhood in the city. So to your point, there's a lot of things that we're moving forward citywide, that you're getting a chance to see what a focused look at one neighborhood looks like. And I would hope that, you know, we would be updating our bicentennial comprehensive plan at some point in the near future, for example, that would help us really prioritize where we're spending. You know, we can't just suddenly turn and just only focus on the South Side for the next 10 years. That's certainly not what the city is going to do. But this gives us a really great picture of what those residents are asking for and critical things that need. And to your point, some things just simmer and they take 20 years. Some things we borrowed and brought from other plans and put in this plan, and there are probably things in this plan that we will borrow and put in the next plan, because it just takes that long for some of those things to happen. That's where the prioritization becomes in really important.
And sometimes this is going to have, as you said, like charities or whatever, but private development, I mean, you're going to need some private developers. So whether we were talking about First Street and what has occurred there, or the East Side, there's been a lot of development in downtown, and the city has certainly worked with it, but it's been spurred by private developers. And so I think here's, here's, Mr. Zuloff sent to me maybe a wish list. That may sound too ephemeral, and, you know, but it really is. If we could have everything in this plan, that is a wish list. And how do we get there? And if something comes up that maybe seemed further down the road, as long as it's not building, building over a bad sewer, I think you jump on it with that private developer that comes along and try to make that happen. So again, I feel comfortable giving a vote of confidence, let's say, on this draft plan. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman. Well, not to try to split the baby here, but while, I've heard, everything I've heard I like, but the truth of the matter, I did not attend the presentation, and just today is when I laid hands on the plan up to page 139 or something. I really feel that it would be irresponsible for me to endorse something I haven't read and I haven't read it. I want to read it. What I'm reading here now, I'm enthusiastic to read it, and I would love to give those parsing little points that, that I'm sort of maybe known for or not, or at least in my head. And the thought about executive summary, but I do not want to retard the process or, you know, hold it back or hamstring it, but really, I'd feel much better about having the chance to have the hard copy in my hand and read it before I recommend it. When I saw the agenda presentation, I thought, oh, great, I'll get my hands on this thing and I'll be able to review and evaluate it. And that part hasn't happened.
Mr. Rajali, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you attended the original presentation, and particularly with your background, I'm curious what your process is.
I was going to say that if we, if we don't move this forward tonight, we've got to wait another month, right? And then you said you were going to bring it to the commission, what, on April 10th, did you say?
I'd like a Planning Commission recommendation to bring it to City Commission. I think that they might feel like we were jumping the gun if we bring it to them without you all endorsing it.
Right.
So that would, if we wait and bring it back for maybe, what you say, a second reading in April, then I would just bring it to City Commission, the meeting right after that.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, but now that Mr. Miller has spoken, I was going to suggest that maybe between now and then, Mr. Zuloff could get together with the consultants as long as he says that he won't rewrite the whole plan. And maybe they could address some of his concerns, and we could pass this contingent on addressing those concerns. But now that Mr. Miller has spoken up, I don't know if that's possible. I certainly don't want to move something forward that people aren't comfortable with, but I would say that I haven't, I've never been involved with or seen a plan that isn't based on a wish list. I mean, it's all about a wish list, and you hope you can get to some of those items. You never get to all of them. And when you put priorities on things, you may not be able to do those because the funding isn't available. So yeah, you want to prioritize things, but like, you know, roads, you got to find local money for those roads. You can't find any federal money, so it's going to be tougher to do because you're going to have to fit them in the city's budget for infrastructure. So I don't know if that helps or if it muddies the waters. I guess if somebody makes a motion, we'll find out.
Before we make a motion, I have a comment through you, Mr. Chairman. Well, more of a question first. Was the presentation that we heard today the same one that was given at the community event?
It was shortened. So the presentation given to the community was about an hour, and I asked them to...
So it was basically...
I think it was about two hours.
Yeah, it was about, well, but the presentation itself was about an hour, and the meeting was about two hours. So we had a robust conversation, and the intention was that that draft is open for public comment, and that was the hope, was that if you endorse it today, it would be contingent on your comments being addressed next week. So we were, the public comment period opened for a couple of weeks, including playing commissioner comments, that they would produce a final draft, or the final, you know, draft to be adopted, for adoption for City Commission. My only concern, holding on to it too long, because I've been through this in cities, where things might start to feel like, oh, but couldn't we have this? Oh, but couldn't we have this? And all of a sudden, you never just get your plan. And I would love to just like, put a bow on this and start implementing it. And I don't by any means want to rush you through this process.
Sure. I have to agree with Mr. Miller and Mr. Zuloff in that everything that I heard today sounds amazing. I'm totally on board. I think every goal that was set out seems to be like a positive goal for the South Side and the city in the right direction. However, I would love to actually sit down and read the 150-page document, word for word, do some of my own, you know, research and analysis, and kind of post-presentation, now that I've heard the presentation from you all and had kind of that outline, because I also wasn't able to attend the community event, which is why I was asking, was what we received today, the same information, or, you know, maybe it was a little bit more elaborate?
I know.
Sure. But I would tend to agree. I don't feel comfortable endorsing something that I haven't read, because I don't know, like I said, what I see here is great. It looks amazing. And if that's what, you know, exactly what the plan stated, then I could say, yeah, let's endorse it. But because it's 150 pages, and we just got a 10-minute, you know, synopsis, I guess, I also would like a little bit more time to review the plan in more detail before I officially endorse it. I'm sure, you know, I'm leaning towards, I'm sure I will be fine with endorsing it, but just doing my due diligence and saying that I actually read the plan, the whole plan is important to me as well. So I would agree with that notion as well. But I also don't want to hinder the process, because I understand what you're saying to, and pushing it, you know, further back. But if we could just maybe table it or delay it just until the next meeting and be ready to, I would be ready personally to make an endorsement at that time or not.
I just want to offer, apologize for not making that clear when I sent it out last week.
I looked, I did check back in the email, and you did, and then there, if we followed the link, then there was access to that full document. So I do take responsibility for not, you know, I guess we're so used to having like, here's your link in our email and click it, or here, you know, Quinn's awesome about sending our documents and things. And so I didn't do my, I didn't take the steps to go all the way to the website and see that that plan was available in full detail. So I do take responsibility for that. But it is what it is now, and I agree that I don't feel comfortable making an endorsement without having fully read the entire plan, you know, in detail.
Well, if I could interject again, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I missed that point, because when and if I read that email, I confused it with this document.
It was before that. It was, it was...
I didn't follow a link. I emailed the city, hey, please, whatever you want me to read, print it out, because my computer does not do what a computer should. I can't follow the link and bring it up. It doesn't work like that for me.
Well, and there was nothing, there was nothing in the agenda packet. There was no link, nothing, you know, so that might have helped a bit.
There was a trail to the full document sent out prior to this meeting.
Right, yeah.
So I acknowledge that, and I take responsibility that I didn't, you know, follow that process. But since we're here now, I also have to say, I would feel comfortable having some time to review the document in its entirety. Since I wasn't able to attend the community event, which I would have gotten a more detailed presentation, this is my first, you know, I guess, review of the South Side Plan, unfortunately, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I guess just a question at how this process would work if we were at a table tonight and then come back at the next meeting. Would it be possible for those who haven't seen the document to submit questions to the consulting group to kind of address those, so that we're not, at the next meeting, we're not raising those issues, and then we're off another month before we can, we can approve anything?
Well, we're in the public comment period, so it would be appropriate for any of us to, you know...
Yeah. I would hope, because I guess my question to you, Mr. Zuloff, is you had seen the unabridged version last week, and why didn't you raise any questions at that time?
Well, for one thing, are you talking about the meeting?
Yes.
Because that was for the public. We were going to do our own deliberation.
Well, you're part of the public.
And by the way, the meeting went an hour and a half, so I wasn't going to contribute to make it worse.
But you couldn't have gotten any more thorough than that. I mean, if you're, if the argument is you didn't have time to understand the plan. But forgive me, I digress.
This is...
Sir, you...
If somebody wants to make a motion to table it with the, with the idea that in between this meeting and the next meeting, you raise your issues, and so they can address them and bring them back, and then maybe we can approve it at that time.
Mr. Rajali, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Trying to find the middle ground again, now that I'm given to understand that the public process comment period is till the 29th, I would be glad to commit to reading it and commenting on it between now and the 29th, provided I can get a copy in my hands...
I agree, I agree.
That, that, so Mr. Rajali's fears are a lie, that we won't...
Well, not fears. My, Mr. Chairman, I've been through a number of plans, and it always bothered me that somebody would, after the fact, that we had all the public sessions, we had plenty of time to review the plan, people could make comment, and then after the fact, we'd get people that wanted to make comment and change things. You had plenty of opportunity. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that the people around the table have had that opportunity, but that's just...
We're still in the public comment.
That's just where my thinking comes from.
Sir, you, Mr. Chairman.
We're still in the public comment period, so this is, we're going to be, we're going to be working with this for a long time. If, the fear that, you know, somehow it might, the concerns might mushroom or something, if it's valid, it's not a reason enough to shove this through. There's time to review this. And with that, I would make the motion to table the discussion to the, to the next meeting. And of course, a second, it's not debatable, either vote to table it or you don't, and then we would, then we can move on.
I'll second that.
I don't know the procedure, but I would speak one more time.
Well, I was trying to make a comment, and you wouldn't let me talk, and now we have a motion, and I can't say the comment that may have deterred the motion.
Well, you don't have a second yet, so go ahead.
Yes, we do. You just, that's...
I second it. I seconded for discussion, right?
Rajali, let's go, let's go.
Yeah, he's, and I don't know the Robert's Rules. I figured there'd be discussion, Mr. Zuloff saying that a motion to table has no discussion.
Well, maybe you didn't recognize me. I think the motion's out of order, Mr. Chairman, because you didn't recognize me. Maybe you, maybe you missed...
I didn't have a chance.
I just had a question.
I didn't have a chance.
Is it a question? For you, Mr. Chairman, I just have, I just had a question regarding what we were talking about with the timeline.
Yeah.
To Mr. Miller's point, would it be a possibility that because, like I acknowledged, this information was made available to us prior to today's meeting, there was an oversight on, I can't take accountability for anybody else on my behalf. I didn't see, we weren't provided a link or an attachment or anything. It was, we were provided, okay, here's the plan, it's on the website, and if you go to the website, there's the link where the plan's available. I acknowledge that. So in the, is there a way that we could have time, like Mr. Miller said, by the 29th, to review the plan, and then still maybe reconvene or, you know, come together to where the commission could still vote on April 10th? I'm not sure. This is like a legality of process question.
We could have a special meeting.
I mean, would that be possible, so that everybody's happy in the sense that we get some time? Because I don't need till April 10th to read it, but, you know, would that be possible? Could we have some time and then still, you know, maybe produce an endorsement prior to the 10th?
I don't know who's going to answer that question for you, but I'd like to make an observation. Personally, again, I sat through what I thought was almost a two-hour presentation. I didn't ask any questions. I certainly can't remember each and every item of the whole concept. But personally, I don't see any downside. This is not voting to approve a final plan. It's not voting to approve funding. It's just saying, as a general concept, at least that's the way I'm approaching it, we like the concept of starting forward on a redevelopment plan for the South Side that includes almost everything anybody could ever think of from A to Z. And not all of those things are ever going to happen. They may never get funded, but it's just saying, these are all the things that we would like to do to improve the South Side. And I personally don't see a downside in just... in just saying, yes, let's start working on this. It's a preliminary plan. But that's my, my approach to it. I just don't think there's a downside. But like, I, I wouldn't, I do understand everybody saying, geez, like, I like to look at it in detail. If I looked at it in detail one more time, I'm not so sure that I would still be able to digest every little thing. It's almost like I'd have to look at, okay, there's a proposed bike path. Whenever we get to that, that's a good idea, how we fund it, and, and maybe that could be done out of order of, of, of other things. But there's so many things here, and none of them are bad. But I, I doubt they're all going to get done, but if they do, great. So.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, would you be, would, who would be able to answer my question?
So your question, if I'm understanding it correctly, is, is there something you could do today that would still give you time to, to keep it on the same?
Meaning, it's our only choice to table it until next month.
So one option would be to schedule a special meeting, which everyone would come in to, you know, take the time to have a special meeting. Another option would be wait till next month and assume, you know, we address comments in between now and then. Um, another option would be, as presented, that you'd recommend it, assume, with the contingency that your comments be addressed within the timeline outline. So you'd, basically within the next week, you read it and let us know what comments you have. And if that was not done with your satisfaction, then I would not bring it to city commission, because the motion would be that you would move it forward contingent on your comments being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'll go on record as saying I'd be willing to attend a special meeting. Again, I, I don't know if we table this, it's going to be the, be the death knell of this project.
It's not.
Honestly.
Like, what I would do is, what I would, was already planning to do is be the person that compiles your comments. So I'm going to shield the consultant's time as much as I can by compiling your comments, making sure they don't contradict with each other, letting you know if they're, if they've already been addressed somewhere else, or if they were, you know, already addressed as some part of the process, or if you have a question I can answer. And anything else I would give to them, they're also going to be collecting the public comments, and then they're going to produce the final draft. The, what, that, what would happen is that they would just put pencils down and just leave that final draft alone until it's time to take it to commission. It's just extending the process by four weeks.
There's really, as, as the director of, or the, the, the chief planner has already said, we're already doing some of this stuff. This really isn't impeding anything. It's just giving us a chance to say that we deliberated and not just rubber stamp something. Look, if, if I was happy with it and ready to vote yes, and one member here said, you know, I really need more time, I don't see the urgency. I'd say, great, give it more time. We're debating something that's kind of, kind of silly here. Table it, take it up next meeting, and surely everyone's going to vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with Mr. Zuloff's suggestion. Uh, my only concern was that if we get to the next meeting, we don't delay it another month. But I, I would be willing to go that route, to give everybody a comfort level and move forward that way.
So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in a second.
A motion to table the discussion till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. The moved and seconded.
Okay.
Vote.
Uh, let's call the roll.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
No.
Jay Castile?
Yes.
Uh, so, motion to table passes. Okay. Um.
Okay.
That was a long, long operation.
One thing in closing, just to make sure to address, so we can get your comments addressed before next meeting, please read the plan. Please send me comments. If I don't hear from you within, let's say, 10 days, I'll assume you have no comments and you're ready to vote next, yes, next meeting.
When does the, the public, when does the public?
Public, the public comment period is over next Wednesday, the 29th at midnight.
Are the public, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good to know. Yeah, well, it's just good to know. I mean, if the public comment ends, let's get ours in by then, too, and then they got everything.
Are the public comments and the public feedback available online or somewhere?
They're collecting a survey for the comments on this draft. If you have questions about the process, and we've been in this for over a year.
Just because I didn't get to attend, usually I try to attend those community meetings or ice cream socials or whatever to personally talk to the community members about their opinions on it. But I, I didn't get a chance to do that. And so I would like to see, you know, some of the comments and things. I know that you took those comments and implemented them in the plan, but are the actual, like, you know, Joe Smith from so-and-so's, this residence said?
There's quotes in there. There's summaries in there.
In, within the plan.
In, in the plan document, yes. And if you have questions about the process, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Smith Group team. I appreciate you. I'm going to leave the teams meeting now, and then we'll catch up on, on this next week.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving, moving on the agenda.
That was long.
Next item of business, 325 West Perkins Avenue. Site plan has been submitted by Janata and Herner on behalf of Firelands Credit Union. They've submitted a site plan for 325 West Perkins Avenue to build a bank in a business district. And I guess staff could present the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Site in question is Zone GB General Business. The surrounding zoning to the north is general business, to the east is general business, to the south is I-1 Light Industrial located in Perkins Township, to the west is general business and also R-140 Single Family Residential. The surrounding uses are all of a business, vacant land, and commercial. Existing use of this site is vacant. Proposed use is a bank. The site is approximately .8754 acres and is located on West Perkins Ave and is contiguous to Smith Road, which is a right-of-way that is not officially a roadway use. Property is currently vacant. A hair salon was previously at this location. The applicant has recently purchased the property to develop it for a Firelands Federal Credit Union location. The new building will be approximately 51.5 feet by 51.4 feet, and will total 3,485 square feet. The project requires 14 parking spaces. The proposal includes 23 parking spaces and four aisle lanes for the drive-through banking. The development will create full, excuse me, four full-time jobs in the city of Sandusky. Staff recommends a privacy fence or privacy landscaping along all residential zoning districts to a height of five and a half to six feet. The planning commission has the authority to require that. Staff currently has a fence permit application on file for this location, but is waiting until after this meeting to review based on the planning commission's comments. The parking proposal is below the 25-space threshold for our landscaping requirements in our zoning code at 23 spaces, and therefore does not require any landscaping standards. However, staff recommends adding trees and shrubbery within the recommended landscaping areas of focus, which is on the screen. The back half of the building is in the north half of the site. All in the green outline is where staff sees potential to have a mix of shrubbery and trees. All area, yard, and parking standards are satisfied in this proposal. This is a permitted use. The applicant has stated that all parking lot lighting will be dark sky friendly. There are no comments and concerns as of now in any departments. Originally, engineering had some comments. The applicant very generously and quickly got those comments addressed, so therefore, engineering does not have any further concerns or comments. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 325 West Perkins with the following conditions, and that, that's all, that all applicable permits are obtained through the building engineering departments and any other political agency. A five-and-a-half-foot to six-foot fence is constructed along the entirety of property contiguous to any residential zoning district, and that illumination shall be designed and located so that light sources are shielded from adjoining residential districts.
Thank you, Ms. Oaks. I have a question. So with the staff recommendation, and you're talking about a fence, but earlier on, you said either landscape screening or a fence. Do you mean that would be either?
Correct. Landscaping would suffice.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Uh, we've, we've been in the habit of, and I appreciate considering the illumination here. Uh, we've been in the habit of, of requiring full cutoff, if not fully shielded, but full cutoff fixtures, uh, or, or luminaries. Um, I, I think it would be appropriate for us to include that requirement as well as shielding from residential per our, uh, convention. Um, and just to get a little lick in, there have, I've observed there have been a few projects where we did ask for, or did require as a condition of approval, fully shielded luminaries. And that's the way it was approved, and they haven't complied. They did something else. The ones I've seen could be corrected, that they're luminaries that could be just placed horizontal, and they would be compliant. But they weren't, and, and, and they are creating light trespass on other properties, and nobody's complained about it. But, um, so I'm just getting that little lick in, that we should follow up and make sure that we're actually doing that. The light pollution is, no, we're not that conscious of it, we should be, and especially in a place where people rely on, uh, the, light pollution impedes navigation on the water or heavy boating district. It, it, the city schools stopped using the observatory because of light pollution. So one of these days, we've got to come back. It's been very complicated. One of these days, we've got, got to come back to the, the light pollution issue. It's been very complicated because of the rapid change in lighting technology in the last, over the last decade, that it's, it's a, it's sort of a moving target how to do that. Um, so, uh, I, I hope we include, uh, fully shielded or full cutoff fixtures, and as, I would suggest adding that to the condition.
Mr. Miller?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Oaks. Recommendation about fences that are contiguous to residential zoning district, there's a page in the report, I think it's three on mine, and it's on the screen now. What property is actually contiguous? Isn't it just a very short spot? That's the only fence required?
That's what we're recommending.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I may, to Mr. Miller, so the yellow on the screen adjacent to the red line.
Yes.
In layman's terms for this particular question, is the residential district that's contiguous? So that is, by the minimum of our code standards, what's, what the commission could require for either a landscaping buffer or a fence.
Yeah, just verifying my understanding of that. That's the way it looked to me, too. It seems like there might be other fences that might.
So it's not a lot of fences, what you're saying?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
It's just that, just that short leg, leg behind the square building, the auto parts store.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion then, uh, to approve the application, subject to the staff recommended, uh, the staff recommended conditions, and in addition, we were okay with the fence, right? Uh, in, in addition, uh, require, uh, fully shielded or full cutoff luminaries. In, in addition to the requirement for the shielding from residential properties.
So, so to make sure I understand that, the recommendation for the fence or vegetation, right?
Is, is that?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Is that what we were, we were, uh?
For the fencing against residential, a six-foot fence or screening vegetation?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Well, let me just repeat what I think I heard. Mr. Zuloff is recommending the application with the staff's recommendations, but also to include full cutoff lighting. Is that?
Right.
What was the lighting requirement already?
I'll second it for, for discussion purposes.
The light sources are shielded.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant would like to say a few words.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kyle Stang.
If you could go to the podium, please, thank you. Sorry, we've got five people telling you at the same time.
Kyle Stang, Janata and Herner, thank you for having us. Uh, not sure if the commission got the report, but I did provide a fixture spec for the, for the light poles, and they are cutoff fixtures. So hopefully that will suffice your guys' needs. Uh, and then on landscaping, just to hit your guys' notes, we, we are in the process of finalizing a landscape plan now. Firelands Federal Credit Union does a fantastic job with heavily landscaping, so I, I do believe it'll be well above and beyond the city's, city's needs here. I do think on the adjacent residential, that you probably prefer to do some shrubbery over a fence, if that's okay, um, to the commission, but we're open to feedback.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just touch on the zoning exact language for this case. It's, let's see here, one, 1133.11 yard regulations of business districts all the way down to side yards, C1A. So business buildings when located on a lot adjoining a residential district shall have a side yard of not less than 12 feet on the adjacent side. A wall or solid fence approximately five-and-a-half foot high may be required by the commission on the sideline of the business lot. So that is up to the planning commission's discretion on the height. It sounds like though either a wall or solid fence is pretty explicit, and I could be interpreting that wrong, but that's my interpretation.
Well, since there isn't a second, what if I offer a, a new motion to, uh, to approve the application allowing landscaping instead of the fence, since it's not required, optional, and to call for the, in addition to the, the shielding from the residential structures, a fully shielded or full cutoff luminaries?
I withdraw my second and second to revised motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up then on my motion, um, and, and I hear no objection to the, the lighting. Usually what happens is typically it's expected, it's, it's so common for cities to require fully shielded, and sometimes some additional requirements and some additional limitations, that most designers expect it by now. And, and, and very, and I've never heard of anybody really objecting to it, so.
And just to be clear, we're talking about parking lot lights?
Yeah, the exterior lighting.
We do have some accent floods on the front of the building?
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you brought that up. Would, in absence of an ordinance, that would be, you know, maybe a little persnickety, but it's not that hard to use, choose cutoff luminaries on exterior, on, on the structure also. It, it's, it's helpful. I mean, it all adds up. So I would, I would love that we get an ordinance as soon as possible. In the meantime, the tool we do have is to, and, and I think you would agree, it's not that hard to, you know, unless you've already ordered it, to, to find a luminary that's a cutoff luminary and, and doesn't send light skyward.
Well, you could still flood the side of the building without sending light.
Well, actually, you can. I mean, the standard, the, the dark sky standard would say, no, don't do that. Uh, if you want to flood the side of the building, put the luminary up high and point it downward, right? Uh, so, uh, and I'm not going to quibble over, you know, some low, especially because usually it looks better if it's low intensity. A really bright one doesn't look so good. A, a low, a low-intensity luminary flooding the side of a building is, you know, looks better than, than a bright one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali?
Uh, I would just, are, are you a representative from Firelands?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd, I'd just like to mention that I'm delighted that you guys are willing to come in and build in the city of Sandusky. Appreciate what you're doing, and I'm looking forward to the finished product, and I will be voting yes.
Here, here. Well, thank you. I, I'm actually Brett Montag. I'm the president and CEO of Firelands Credit Union. So we are very, very happy with our new site and extremely happy to invest in the city of Sandusky again.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we vote?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I guess call the roll.
Jay Castile?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Did that get everybody? Or, or?
Just fine.
Motion passed. Um, thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a, a revised master plan to move an existing monument at Veterans Park. It's being submitted by Fight Design Group and Mark Fost on behalf of the city of Sandusky, um, to move an existing monument and add a monument. to move an existing monument and add a monument. Staff have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site is zoned downtown business. The surrounding zoning to the north is downtown business, to the east is downtown business and also general business. To the south is local business, and to the west is downtown business. The surrounding uses of the site are business, residential, and civil. The existing use of this site is a park. The proposed use is staying a park. The applicant proposes to relocate an existing plaque to a new location on the site. There will be a new memorial place where the existing plaque that's being moved sits. The new memorial will be a four-foot-tall concrete wall with two-and-a-half feet of concrete below grade. The work is to take place at the southwest corner of Veterans Park around the Pentagon-shaped Staff determined that no additional parking is necessary and recommends waiving any requirements, given that this is zoned downtown business and outside of the downtown parking district that doesn't require any standards. All landscaping standards are satisfied, all area use and yard standards are satisfied. Staff did have a few comments that were addressed by the applicant, and that's that the plant-type circle on the screen and the bench removal, to which the applicant has responded to. The, let's see here, the benches are all loose and will be relocated in conjunction with the greenhouse for the bench removal question, and then the plant-type question. Mr. Fike implied that he will continue to work with the greenhouse staff to find an appropriate plant type for this location. Based on all of this, all these comments and feedback, staff recommends the approval of the proposed park master plan adjustment at Veterans Park with the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permit, all applicable permits are obtained through the building, engineering departments, planning, division of planning, and any other applicable agency prior to construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
I would move that we approve the application subject to the recommendation in the staff report.
I think we do have people here, I don't know if, okay. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
And whoever you want.
I would be charmed. I defer to the lady.
Been moved and seconded, I guess call the roll on the motion, please.
Well.
You want this more discussion?
Well, I did have one or two questions. I wondered if there were any graphics of what, what we're, what the new, what the new monument's going to look like, but if there aren't any, that's.
This, here.
Yeah, okay, so basically, section view, all right. And what's, what's the material then?
Concrete.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we, you know.
It's simply an obelisk, but it's not an obelisk shape, it's just a.
It looks like it's a slab, right, obelisk, white?
It's a wall.
It's a wall?
A wall.
Yeah, okay.
We're taking the plaques off the obelisks and putting them on, on a wall, like tablets and wheelchairs that go up to them, but they're not low down here on some sides, because we have more than one plaque on each side.
Thank you, that's helpful. I didn't understand what the point of it was.
We'll do something with that, obelisks, that area, we'll do something with that. I don't know if it's coming out or put some different, I'm deciding.
Any further questions?
Did, did you happen to both sign in, so I can, okay, I know, Mr. Fike.
Removing all the benches or just one bench? Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
The front of the wall.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought I understood correctly.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded, and we'll call the roll, please.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Steve Padali?
Yes.
Jade Castile?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Unanimous, motion approved. Thank you, gentlemen, good luck. The other items of business not on the agenda. Okay, anybody care to move for adjournment?
One more, one more closing comment. We will have a meeting next month. We have an application, a minimum of one application right now, so we will have a meeting for April.
Did, did our chief planner have any updates or anything, following the irregular tradition of providing updates?
The largest amount of my focus has been on the South Side plan. We do have an updated concept of the Sandusky Wheels Park coming out hopefully tomorrow, so that'll be its third iteration, working with the skate park and the, or the all-wheels community to update.
So that'll be a presentation tomorrow somewhere, or?
It will be an online video link, concept drawings, and survey links. We found that the online engagement has been incredibly successful with this community. When we sent out a survey, we get like 100 responses to them within a day, and they are not all just in Sandusky, they're regional. We have people kind of watching the process from Michigan and Cleveland and all over, you know, north Norman, Ohio.
Young people.
Yeah, yeah, it's a very engaged group online, so we will be putting out that concept. There's going to be 3D renderings, and we are hoping, assuming we get positive comments on that to bring the next phase.
Where would one find a link to be a fly on the wall for that?
I am going to work with our communications manager to see if we can get a little webpage built for the skate park, because I've got a lot of questions.
Well, you have a presentation tomorrow, right?
There will be a link to a video, so it'll be a.
Fair.
I.
Where would I find the link?
We'll post it on social media, and we'll post it on the city website, and I'm going to work with Commissioner.
On the, on the, on the planning department page?
That is a question, I think, I'm going to ask if Tom can build us a little webpage that's for the skate park.
Maybe you could spam us with the link when you figure out where it is.
I would be happy to share.
What time is that going to be around? I'll try to tune into that.
It's, it's not a live presentation, it's already recorded, so it's just a video.
Oh, so you're just, whenever you post it, it'll be.
Yeah, it'll be a video link and with the concept renderings and a survey for feedback.
And I have one quick update. We are going boarding commission to boarding commission, so at your next meeting, we're going to ask that we take up about 15 or 20 minutes of your time after the meeting to just, we're doing some updates and trainings and answering questions about procedure and things like that for all boards and commissions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're right in the middle of, I'm getting exactly half the volume with a lag.
That's okay, I can, I can tell you guys afterwards.
Could you speak into the microphone or not at all? Either one?
Sure.
I'm not hearing a word you're saying, sorry.
I'll give you guys an update afterwards.
That's better.
I'm not going to.
Yeah, it is better if you're.
Could you start again, please? I'm sorry.
We're just going to be doing some, some updates and trainings after the meeting at your next meeting, so if, if you can attend, that's great, but it might be 15 or 20 minutes of your time beyond the meeting. It's not part of the meeting, just to go over some housekeeping procedural stuff.
After the next meeting?
After the next meeting, yeah. Just wanted to give you a heads up, so that we don't blindside you.
We're just going to ask you to stay just a little bit longer, but not, not too long.
Okay, we don't get pizza.
Not pizza long.
Not pizza long.
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Convince our finance director.
Mr. Chairman, I'm reminded by the training, which would be awesome, that we are required by the ordinance to provide training annually to the Landmark Commission, and I would love to be a fly on the wall for that, too, if and when it happens, so just, just, just a comment.
I can mention those design guidelines are underway for, to update the Landmarks Commission design guidelines, and we're going to have a public meeting about that the same day as the next Landmarks Commission meeting, which would be April 19th, and that will be here in Commission chamber starting at 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, guess that's it.
That's it. All right.
Do we have a motion?
Well, we sort of, I guess, undid the adjournment by continuing, so, but just say we're adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Yeah.